Unfailingly tender, loyal, and good. His life was a rebook to vice and a revage of virtue. The purity of his private character gave radiance to the discipline and integrity of his public service. Even in death, he maintained his serenity that defined him in life. Not a sigh, not a groan, just a quiet submission to the will of God. Such was the man Nigeria has lost. Such was the man for whom our nation now mourns. President Buhari's life was one of austere honor. He stood always ramrodded straight or moved by the temptation of power, unseduced by applause and or afraid of the loneliness that often faces those who do what is right rather than what is popular. His was a quiet courage, a righteousness that never announced itself. His patriotism was lived more in action than in words. His life traced the arc of Nigeria's journey. Born before the independence, he became a young soldier in the struggle to keep our nation whole. In war and in peace, he served with the vigilance and determination as if the task of watching over Nigeria has been assigned to him alone. From the battlefield to the corridors of power, he remained faithful to the task. He governed the northeastern state and stood as head of state. Years later, he returned to the chair to chair the petroleum trust fund, which he administered with his pattern rigour and complete fidelity to the public good. Yet, with all that he had achieved, his most enduring legacy would be carved in democracy. In a time when men had lost hope, that change was seen. Muhammadu Buhari put his faith in the people of this country. We stood together, he and I, alongside others, going from across the political spectrum, religions, and tongues. We formed an alliance that enabled Nigeria to experience the first true democratic answer of power from one ruling party to another. When he was sworn in as our party's first elected president, he led with restraint, governed with dignity, and bore the burden of the leadership without complaint. Those who knew him most intimately understood that the authority of that external office never changed him. In the face of pressure, he remained calm. In the face of crisis, he remained resolute. In the face of triumph, he remained modest. He retained his jovial spirit. When his dinner ended, he returned to Dara, not to command from the shadows or to hold court or to live as he always had, never seeking to impose his will, but content, content to let others carry the nation forward. President Buhari was not a perfect man, no leader is, but he was, in every sense of the word, a good man, a decent man, an honorable man. His record will be debated, as all legacies are, but the character he brought to public life, the moral force he carried, the incorruptible standard he presented will not be forgotten. His was a life lived in full service to Nigeria and in fidelity to God. Now he rests, and we, who remain, must carry the memory of life as a standard to guide us. Let us honor him, not only with words, but with humility in power, discipline in service, compassion in governance, and faithlessness in the pursuit of justice. Our Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty five. On Tuesday, July fifteen, twenty twenty five, a grateful nation bid farewell to one of our own most illustrious towns. It was a proud honor for me, alongside Vice President Kashim Shetima, to lead the funerary procession to Dara and witness his burial in the dignified manner befitting the grace and a noble leader. I thank the Inter-Military Committee led by the Secretary to the Government of the Federation, George Akume, and Governor Hadi Kureada for organizing the befitting state funeral within forty-eight hours. In this period of national money, I once again said my heartfelt condolences to Ajia Aisha Buhari, her children, the entire Buhari family. We honor his service, reflect on his legacy, and pray for the peaceful repose of his soul. May Gaskia, the People's General, the former president, your duty is done. May Almighty Allah forgive his shortcomings and grant him a legion of fidelity. May his life continue to inspire generations of Nigerians to serve conviction and selflessness. President Buhari, thank you. Nigeria will remember you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for this very solemn and patriotic statement on this occasion. Mr. Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is tribute from national leadership, the National Assembly, and governors and ministers. May I therefore invite the President of the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, Gothi La Faiyo, to deliver his statement, his tribute. Because of time, we expect it to keep within five minutes. Your Excellency.
Mr. President, Commander in Chief of the League of Nigeria, President Bola Ahmed Tinibu, GCFR. Your Excellency, the Vice President. Your Excellency, the Speaker. My brothers, Deputy Senate President, Deputy Speaker. So that you two government and ministers. Let me at this point specially recognize the family of our late hero, the family of President. Muhammadu Buhari, GCFR. Our blessed memory, who are used, the young Yusuf. Muhammadu Buhari, at the point of contact, I rest on that protocol, Mr. President. For, for me, as President of the Senate, and I want to say my fellow custodians of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. There are moments in the life of a nation when she must pause, not out of routine, but out of reverence. Today is such a moment as we gather in very solemn remembrance of President Muhammadu Buhari, a man forged in the furnace of battle and tempered in the trials of governance. A man who gave everything he had to a country that asked everything of him. President Muhammadu Buhari was not perfect, no leader is, but he was a very principled man. He stood for something, and in a world where it is easy to chase headlines, he chose instead to chase honor. Where others sought glory, he sought duty. As a minister and his cabinet, appointed by him, I saw President Muhammadu Buhari unplugged. He were not flamboyant, far from it. His voice was measured, his steps deliberate, his public demeanor austere. But beneath that calm exterior beat the heart of a great patriot, unyielding, unbending, and utterly uninterested in personal comfort, where duty go. He served this nation first in uniform, and decades later, he returned to serve it once more, this time in flowing Agbada. Whether clad in khaki or in civilian robes, through coups and campaigns, criticisms and crises, he never wavered in his belief in the promise of Nigeria. His legacy is marked by monumental achievements, too many, too vast, and too significant for me to enumerate within the time allotted to me. President Buhari did not merely pass through the corridors of power. He left his boots and imprints in them. He believed that discipline mattered, that integrity mattered, that leadership, even when lonely, might be anchored in something greater than power. He did not seek the right ways of popular acclaim. He walked with seriousness and often in solitude, along with the wish of national conscience. And let us be honest, he was tough. He was a soldier who did not flinch under fire, a leader who did not flee from responsibility, and above all, a Nigerian whose loyalty to this nation was never up for sale. His toughness was born not out of pride, but of patriotism, a fierce, unrelenting belief that Nigeria, with all its challenges, was seen worth fighting for. And yes, some disagree with him. That is the nature of democracy. But even his fiercest critics will admit that he did not bill for the nation's boss, nor panda to its pleasures. He remained to the very end a sentinel of Spartan simplicity and austere integrity. His life reminds us of a truth often forgotten in this noisy age, that greatness is not always loud and that history, in its wisdom, sometimes reserves its most solemn applause for those who lay guard not for fame but for legacies. Let it be said by generations to come that a man once walked this land with a firm gaze, a steady gaze, and an iron sense of duty. His name was Muhammadu Buhari, former president and former commander in chief of the Armed Forces of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. May God bless his memory, and may his soul rest in perfect peace. And may God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria that he served and loved. I thank you.
Next is the Speaker, Honorable Speaker, House of Representatives, Dr. Tajidina Abass.
Your Excellency, Ahmed Tinibu, GCFR. The Vice President, Kashim Shetima. The Senate President, the Deputy Speaker, the Deputy Senate President. The Secretary to the Government of the Federation, the Chief of Staff. Members of the Federal Executive Council. Members of the family of the deceased president. Members of the press, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. We gather today in solemn reverence to honor the memory of a man whose life and legacy are deeply woven into the fabric of our republic. In this very chamber, where he once presided with purpose and principle, we remember President Muhammadu Buhari, a sentinel of service, a steward of simplicity, and a statesman shaped by sacrifice. President Buhari was no ordinary figure in our national journey. He embodied quiet strength, moral clarity, and unshakable sense of duty. At the time when society was seduced by materialism, he chose a life of modest means and meaningful service. He was devoted to family and steadfast in his Islamic faith. His humor and humility softened his disciplined exterior. Buhari's belief in the bravery of life and the certainty of judgment shaped his aesthetic life and guided his public conduct. He lived not for applause or affluence, but for principle, for country, and for the cause of a better Nigeria. To me, he was more than a leader. He was a member. He was a mentor. He was a moral compass and a source of guidance. My political journey began in twenty ten under the banner of the Congress for Progressive Change, a party built on his credibility and character. A few years after my election, he honored me by commissioning some of my constituency projects, making me the first member of the House of Representatives under the CPC to receive such recognition. I remember him in the blazing sun of Zaire, standing shoulder to shoulder with the people he so deeply loved. It was quite a moment that spoke volumes. Years later, in twenty twenty-three, during a brief meeting in the United Kingdom, he warmly welcomed me following my election as Speaker. His counsel was clear: lead as a servant, never as a master. These words, simple yet profound, have remained my compass. In public office, President Buhari was the true partner in democracy. He respected the independence of the legislature and all his ministers to engage constructively with parliament. He signed into law several landmark bills that open political space to young people, strengthening our electoral processes, and laid the foundation for economic reform. His development vision reached beyond the present and into the future. The roads, railways, and bridges he built are lasting gifts to the generations yet unborn. His war against corruption was all relentless. Known to millions as May Gaskia, the honest one, he lived a life free from personal scandal. His simple lifestyle was no symbolic. It was sincere. His integrity set a standard that would long outlive him. Whether as a military officer, a state governor, a federal commissioner, or a democratically elected president, he brought to every office the same discipline, devotion to duty. To those who criticized him from afar, I ask, did you truly see him, hear him, or know him? Did you witness the passion in his voice when he spoke of Nigeria? Or the pride in his eyes when he spoke of our people? For if you did, you will respect and honor him. He was not a man of many words, but his words carried weight. His dreams for Nigeria were fast. His commitment to his progress unshakable. He embodied the base in us as a people, our relentlessness, resilience, love of God, and charity to our neighbors. As we mark the end of his early journey, we also mark the close of a defining chapter in our nation's history. But his example endures integrity as the soul of leadership, simplicity in power, patriotism above self-interest, unity in diversity, and resilience in adversity. He gave Nigeria everything he had, from the youthful strength of a young soldier to the wisdom of an elder statesman. He never clung to power. He never sought personal reward. He served, and he stepped aside when his time was up. Let us honor him, honor his life not only with words, but also with a renewed commitment to the values he cherished. And Buhari, Nigeria salutes your service, and history in its final judgment will remember you forever. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. And next is the Head of Civil Service of the Federation, Didi Wosunjak.
Your Excellency, President Bola Ahmed Tinibu, GCFR, Chairman of Council. Your Excellency, the Vice President, Senator Kashim Shetima, GCON. Your Excellency, the Leadership of the National Assembly. Honorable Ministers, Members of the Federal Executive Council, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, and of course, the family of our late president. It is with a deep sense of loss and solemn reflection that on behalf of the entire federal civil service, I commiserate with His Excellency, President Bola Ahmed Tinibu, GCF, our, the federal government, and indeed, all the good people of Nigeria, on the passing of our former president, Muhammadu Buhari, GCFR, who died on Sunday, thirteen July, twenty twenty-five, in the United Kingdom. President Muhammadu Buhari was a towering figure in Nigeria's national life, an embodiment of discipline, integrity, and unflinching dedication to the service of our country. His leadership journey, first as military head of state from nineteen eighty-four to eighty-five, and later as a democratically elected president from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three, spanned critical moments in our history and was underscored by his consistent pursuit of transparency, accountability, and national renewal. Under his stewardship, the Nigerian civil service witnessed the revival of reform efforts. His administration championed and launched the Federal Civil Service Strategy and Implementation Plan twenty seventeen to twenty twenty and the subsequent successor plan of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. Mr. President, distinguished members of council, these reforms encapsulated in these plans reflect President Buhari's enduring belief in the importance of a capable and ethical public service as the bedrock of good governance. They brought to life initiatives that strengthened institutional capacity, which provided the framework for driving professionalism, efficiency, and digital transformation of the service. Even more significantly, Mr. Chairman, the late president's emphasis on merit, discipline, and the rule of law inspired the beginning of a culture shift within the civil service, one that continues to shape the trajectory of ongoing transformation efforts. On a personal note, I had the privilege of having been appointed by the late former president as a federal permanent secretary in twenty seventeen. As we mourn his passing, we also celebrate a life well spent in the service of our dear nation. This was a leadership marked by simplicity, courage, and a rare moral clarity, values that remain instructive for all of us that serve in government today. May the memory of President Muhammadu Buhari, GCF, continue to inspire us to build a more disciplined, transparent, and citizen-centered public service. Thank you, and may God.
Your Excellency, the right Honorable Speaker, the House of Representatives, Honorable Tajidina Abbas, Deputy Speaker. Lieutenant President. Your Excellency, the Governor of Pimo State and the Governor of Katana State, my colleagues here present. The Secretary of Government of the Federation, Senator George Akume. The Chief of Staff, the National Security Advisor, Members of the Federal Executive Council. Beloved public members of the former president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Gentlemen of the press, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of my colleagues at the Nigerian Governors Forum, I extend our heartfelt condolences to your Excellency, Mr. President, the government and the people of Nigeria, and the family of our late former president Muhammadu Buhari. We gather today to pay tribute to a man whose life was woven into the fabric of our nation. A soldier. His legacies remain visible and impactful. Mr. President, your gesture towards your brother and predecessor is both historic and symbolic. It reflects a spirit of national unity and respect for the service that resonates with Nigerians and sets a worthy example for generations to come. The state barrel accorded President Buhari reflects the esteem in which he was held, not just by this administration, but by Nigeria in general. It speaks volume about your personal commitment to honoring those who serve this nation faithfully. Peaceful repose of General Buhari's soul. May God grant his family the strength and comfort, and may the Almighty continue to bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. And next is the Honorable Minister of Aviation, Pastor S. K. Yama.
The Chairman of Council and President and Commander in Chief of the Armed Forces of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, President Bola Ahmed Tinibu, GCF. The Vice President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, Senator Kashim Shetima, GCON. The Senate President, Speaker of the House of Representatives, and kindly at this point allow me to adopt the protocols that have been well established before now, to save time. And call the family of the late president. This is a tribute to a thoroughbred patriot, an officer, and. This is a tribute to a thoroughbred patriot, an officer, and a statesman. The passing of late President Muhammad Buhari has evoked different emotions and reactions from the length and breadth of Nigeria and even beyond. This is expectedly so because he was one of only two persons in the history of our country who had the opportunity to govern this country twice. First as military head of states, and later as a democratically elected president whose actions and policies shaped this country in many respects that affected and defined the lives and destinies of millions of people. However, one consensus in the midst of these different emotions, opinions, and reactions from friends, foes, and associates alike, is that President Muhammad Buhari served this country completely unblemished. Whether you choose to judge him harshly or kindly, the general consensus is that he embodied honesty and integrity in public office. He was a president who laid by example, who walked the talk, who inspired integrity, uncomprehensible transparency, and accountability in public office. He was a moral and ethical compass in governance. He served this country with a good conscience, with a fear of God, and with extraordinary discipline. In my immediate reaction after his death, I wrote that "They don't make them like him anymore", not given to the primitive acquisition of unearned wealth, frugal in living, austere in lifestyle, not inclined to show boating, and incredibly honest to the core", in quotes. The notion of his transparency and honesty was not just a flash in a pan. He was trusted and tested over time because he served at different levels and in different capacities. He was a platoon commander, a commanding officer, a brigade commander, a general officer commanding, a governor of the old eastern region, yes, God, not eastern region, a federal commissioner, and a chairman of the Petroleum Trust Fund, military head of state, and finally, democratic president. Yet, he was never found wanting for once. I was privileged to serve him in different capacities, and I can attest to his rare discipline. I was his campaign spokesperson in the twenty nineteen presidential election, and then his Minister of State, first in the Ministry of Niger Delta Affairs, and later in the Ministry of Labor and Employment. From these vantage positions, I saw that he was a fierce tickler for hierarchical order and discipline. The Buhari I know will never, ever sacrifice hierarchical order and discipline on the altar of personal relationships, family ties, or friendships. Once a subordinate can no longer work with his superior, no matter how close that subordinate was to President Buhari, this subordinate will be sacrificed in order for government to function smoothly. There are several examples that I know you all remember, and as Minister of State, I enjoyed that support from him. Only very few people in history have the grace and opportunity to reinvent themselves at the highest level and to recraft their own legacies. From the image of a no-nonsense and stern military dictator of the nineteen eighties, who allegedly truncated democracy and rode roughshod over the rule of law, to the image of a frustrated serial election loser, and then to the hero and symbol of change and hope that the nation chose to defeat a behemoth ruling party and the sitting president in twenty fifteen for the first time in our history, and finally, to the legacy of a sitting president who presided over a peaceful, free, unfair democratic process that produced his success in office and peacefully handed over power. This is the stuff which truly official movies are made. That is why for millions of people, he was an enigma in life, an enigma in deaths. He oscillated from one perception to the extreme, to the other extreme perception that was diametrically different from the firsts. At the end, we can conveniently say that President Muhammad Buhari ticked all the boxes that we can use to qualify a quintessential patriot, a fine officer, and an exceptional statesman. He came, he fought, and he conquered. He has finished the course, and he has run a good race. Goodbye, Maigaskia. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Minister. Next is Honorable Minister Budget and Economic Planning, Senator Abubaka Tiku Bagudu.
Your Excellency, Mister President, Bola Ahmed Tinibu, GCFR, Your Excellency the Vice President, the, all the leaders of the country and members of the Nigerian Governors Forum, particularly the Chairman and the Chairman of the Progressive Governors Forum, members of the Executive Council, members of the family. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, Your Excellency, I join all the previous speakers in first and foremost condoning you on this tragic personal loss to you and to the nation and to the family of a leader, President Muhammad, former President Muhammad Buhari, whom I was privileged to relate with as a state governor, and subsequently as Chairman of the Progressive Governors Forum, as well as participating in numerous ad hoc assignments to which he appointed me. To say that President Buhari is humble is an understatement. He lived a life that resonates humility, sincerity, and clarity of purpose. I had my earlier baptism of fire on the test of his humility when, ten days to the general election in twenty fifteen, a very close friend of his, Colonel Belllo Calial, in Kebi State, died. And he instructed Hadisirika to call me. And when I was, when he spoke to me, he said, "This is personal to him, it's not political, so he wants me to come to the airport with three vehicles." And I immediately protested that at that time in our national life it would be impossible for him to visit any place, and it is kept a secret, but he said, "I should do my best." So he came to Brining, Kebi, arrived, and we dropped to Baguio, which is two hours away. By the time we reached there, everyone along the route knows that President Buhari has gone to Baguio. So on our way back, villages, towns, they are all lining up the city, in fact, some are lined on the street, and he refused to roll down the glass to wave at them because he felt that was being political. We were begging him, pleading with him, but that is the hallmark of somebody uh, who exemplifies what he says. May his soul rest in peace. Your Excellency, as a state governor, a feat that I share with many people here under him, especially the Vice President, the Honorable Minister of Defense, the Minister of Books, Minister of FCT, Chairman of NGF, Chairman of PGF, uh, Minister of Police Affairs. We know how, out of his respect for institutions, the National Economic Council was transformed into a body of dialogue rather than a body of monologue. All economic issues were transparently discussed and presented, which strengthened our federalism and, in fact, strengthened the national acceptance of the challenges that were facing us as a nation. Because he was even surprised by the magnanimity of those challenges. Twenty-seven states could not pay salaries, and so on and so forth. But because issues were, the National Economic Council functioned as a council because governors who were in the council, who had served previously, have told us how much of a transformation it is, and that has remained uh, so, and it's a big achievement. Your Excellency, in his quest to confront the daunting security and economic challenges he faced and he campaigned on, we all got close to him, all governors, all of us were treated equitably. He, he, he stated, he interrogated and stated the problems he encountered in a very, very nationalistic and patriotic manner. He used to laugh at how, under him, regrettably, banditry is expanding in the northwest. He always said, "The same people, the same religion, but why?" And for him, not accustomed to playing, playing games, he decided to deal with it head on. Your Excellency, I know I have five minutes, I'm sorry. To underscore the economic gravity he faced of including the twenty-seven states that could not pay salary, and he was always lamenting, "How is it that workers cannot be paid?" So a lot of financial engineering was entered into in order to ensure that, and it was resolved. This is an addition to battling COVID challenge, battling two depressions, as well as flooding and expansion of security incidences. But he remained undoubted. On two personal incidences, seven governors, including five from the northwest, uh, had a meeting at one time, this is Kebi, Zamfara, Sokoto, Katsina, uh, and Kaduna States, as well as Niger and Flato. Because by then, in twenty sixteen, the security challenges is very prominent in this state. And we sat with security service, commanding officers, police commissioners of our state at Kaduna, and we came up with a budget of seven hundred million naira for a military operation. We came to see him, and regrettably, he told us that there was no money. So let us go and make a contribution, uh, and he refunded us that. So the states contributed one hundred, one hundred million, to which he contributed. Today, the fiscal space has improved significantly as a result of those sacrifices and more. He launched the Angogo Rovers program with the mantra, "Let us eat what we grow and grow what we eat." I was privileged to be both the Chairman of Presidential Tax Awards on Rice and Wheat, as well as Vice Chairman, National Food Security Council. And, Your Excellency, one day, led by His Excellency the Vice President, we went to him again to say that public sentiment is so strong that the service trips could do better, and why wouldn't he consider making changes? But the noble person that he is, he said to us, "How can he make changes to people whom he could not provide what they truly required of him to do the job?" He said, "He will never do so, uh, he can do so for other reason, but not because they have failed." That is the hallmark of integrity. And Your Excellency, just in conclusion, he was concerned about Nigeria, especially his relationship with you and the party. In the forum to the National Convention of our party and the primaries, he wrote me three letters as Chairman of the Progressive Governors Forum, all highlighting his respect for rule of law and saying, literally, serving as a warning that he wouldn't bend or he wouldn't support any departure from with respect. I will read two paragraphs, Your Excellency. In the Christians March letter, twenty twenty-two, he said, "It has come to my attention that because of recent events, the APC is faced with multiplicity of court cases pending against it in various courts across the country. As a result of this, the party faces the possibility and prospect of the invalidation of all its activities and action by the Independent National Electoral Commission. No doubt, these controversies and uncertainties, as enumerated, pose a threat to the party and may lead to possible non-recognition of its activities, elections and probable invalidation of all its other actions by AINEC. This may ultimately lead to implosion and non-existence. This is a president with full powers of the federal government warning on terms of March." Your Excellency, in the ninth June letter which came after the primaries, I will read the, he said, "Our candidate, His Excellency Senator Aswaju Bola Ahmed Tinibu, is no stranger to you. He is our friend and brother. We know his commitment, his track record, and his capacity to lead our party to success. So now is the time for all of us to come together and march forward as we did in twenty fifteen to a convincing APC victory. I look forward to working closely with APC governors to support Senator Aswaju, Bola Ahmed Tinibu, and all our APC candidates to success. Your Excellency, in all humility, I condole you on the loss of your brother, as he described in this letter, President Muhammad Buhari, of blessed memory, as well as the Vice President and the members of the family and all Nigerians. Thank you, Your Excellency."
Thank you. Uh, next is the Minister of Health and Social Welfare, Professor Lipate.
Your Excellency, Mister Chairman, Mister President, His Excellency, the Vice President, President of the Senate, Right Honorable Speaker, my colleagues, Honorable Members of Council, may I stand on the existing protocol? Mister President, let me also join my colleagues and previous speakers to condole you for the personal loss that has occurred to you and to our nation. Today, we honor the indelible footprints of a quiet, but resolute leader, our departed former President Muhammad Buhari, GCFR. His footprints stretch symmetrically across Nigeria's over half a century of history since its independence as a nation, and with a tangible impact in all parts of our country, but especially, I will say, in the northeast geopolitical zone of our dear nation. In August nineteen seventy-five, then Lieutenant Colonel Muhammad Buhari was appointed the Governor of the Northeastern State, a vast region that encompasses Borno, Yobe, Gambi, Bauchi, Taraba, and Adamo states of today. During his brief time in office, his pro-pro policies, the infrastructure upgrades, his novel efforts at instilling social justice ignited his widespread popularity in the region that has continued across generations. In nineteen seventy-six, when the federal government decided to split the Northeastern State into smaller new states, one of which was Borno State, the youthful Colonel would assume duties as the first military governor of that state. In Borno State, Colonel Buhari at that time led the foundation for Meduguri to serve as the state capital, building its first administrative offices, civil service structures, while overseeing the complex transition from a larger regional government to a smaller state setup, which ensured a swift start for the new state and all the other state governments in the region. Years later, as was mentioned, as Federal Commissioner of Petroleum Resources, we saw thousands of kilometers of new. thousands of kilometers of new oil pipelines, new fuel depots and a new refinery later. Major General Buhari would assume office later as the nation's head of state. We witnessed at that time, I was very young, how his war on indiscipline brought sanity and efficiency into our public spaces, into our marketplaces and overall social spheres. This reflected the truth that he deeply understood, that nation building starts with core values, the right values. Beyond that, at that time, Major General Buhari's import restriction decree in nineteen eighty-four attempted to boost local manufacturing and enhance the profitability of local industry. In fact, car industry was just one industry boosted during the period with an Austrian car manufacturer, Stair. I was in primary school, I think I was just in secondary school at that time in Bauchi, and we saw it begin to assemble the stair vehicles, which was a landmark at that time. A decade later, the experienced general will now come back to take up the role of the chairman of the petroleum trust fund, as was mentioned earlier. Across the country and in particular in the northeast, we saw thousands of kilometers of neglected roads being rehabilitated, millions of textbooks getting their way to academic institutions, portable water finding its way to the most far-reaching areas of the region and health infrastructure being modernized, as well as the popular drug supply system, which reached every nook and cranny of our country. So much of this was then popularly labeled as PTF projects, which we all fondly remember. So for us in the northeast, it was not unexpected that when the progressive forces of President Bola Ahmed Tinubu and Muhammadu Buhari joined together to form Africa's largest party in twenty thirteen, it was clear that the best was here to come for our nation and for our region. It is now evidently clear with the leadership that we are witnessing, manifesting the progressive ideology that our country so desperately deserves. As His Excellency, Mr. Vice President, can attest, when he was governor, the onslaught of Boko Haram was certain that the economy of the northeast had been slowed to a near standstill with millions displaced, a mass worth of territory under the control of terrorists as civilian and traditional leaders were being brutally pushed aside and killed in some areas. President Muhammadu Buhari moved swiftly upon coming to office and effectively to take back the Boko Haram and ISWAP captured lands, resettling displaced residents, restoring traditional tools and massively upgrading the capacity and organizational architecture of the nation's armed forces. Understanding that economic development is critical to establishing a sustainable victory over a terrorist threat across the country and especially in the northeast, which was deeply affected, in the eight years he achieved several feats, including many universities and colleges in the northeast, the Northeast Development Commission to rebuild, restore and rehabilitate, several power projects, began the oil exploration projects, major road infrastructure projects. And in social investment, several programs which have continued to date. In health, investments across our country, expansion of footprints, dealing with the COVID nineteen crisis under his term leadership, in education and the social investments. All these are the foundations upon which we must now continue to build upon. His Excellency, President Buhari understood a fundamental concept, that leadership is also stewardship. This was reflected in his consistent respect for established institutions and established processes. He was obviously, and it was mentioned by Minister Keamo, that President Buhari was a stickler for due process. He leaves us with many important lessons. There are several lessons that we'll continue to learn from this great man. First, he was an authentic leader. There is no difference between what you see in public space and what he is in private. He was consistent over time, across decades of his public career, I think those who have worked closely with him can testify that President Buhari was an authentic, genuine leader. Those that follow him, those that love him can see that. Secondly, he has built character, built on self-discipline, restraint and the courage of his conviction to stand for what is right. That manifested itself in the integrity that is widely acclaimed. Thirdly, he served with humility. I think we have already heard about that. But importantly, His Excellency, President Buhari, may God rest his soul, understood the truism that life is ephemeral, it passes, that power also passes, and he lived with that understanding. He was not attached to the world. He did not accumulate. He was not tirelessly pursuing things that ordinarily one would expect for the positions of authority he has held over several decades, understanding that all of it will come to an end and we have seen in this mid-July that in fact, that is true. Despite all his serious-minded work, it is also evident that he did not take himself too seriously, or life too seriously. He is fully conscious of the transition that we are all in. As we have heard, he regularly cracked jokes with friends, with team members and acquaintances. He lived a modest and decent life. He was a good man and there are many more lessons to be drawn from the late, former president's life. And at this time of our national mourning and in consonance with your Excellency, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu's directive on praying and reflecting on Buhari's life, we will all be served well if we truly sit down and reflect and imbibe the key lessons from the life of this beloved and great leader of our country. We pray, may Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala forgive and grant President Muhammadu Buhari Al Jannah Fiddos. May the family that he left behind be blessed. May Allah continue to strengthen and guide you, our President Bola Ahmed Tinubu, GCFR, the Vice President and all our national leaders. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala bless Nigeria. May he unite us all and may he give us all a fine conclusion. Amin. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Honourable Minister. Let's try to keep to a lot of time of five minutes. Next is the Honourable Minister of Solid Minerals Development, Dr. Dele Alaki.
Mr. Chairman of Council, President and Commander-in-Chief of Nigeria, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu, GCFR, Vice President Kashim Shetima, President of the Senate, Speaker of the House of Reps, the Governor's High President, my colleagues in the Executive Council of Nigeria, the family of our departed hero, ladies and gentlemen. In moments like this, as we say farewell to General Muhammadu Buhari, we reflect on a life defined by unwavering faith, integrity and devotion to country and maker. His passing not only ends an era, but also calls all of us to honor the principles embodied. The transition of General Buhari has brought us to such a historic moment. This is a time for reflection and for reigniting our hope for a greater tomorrow. Let us reflect on the life of a man whose social being, as Karl Marx said, determined his social consciousness. A departed president began his journey as a child, studying the Quran and learning the Hadith. He was raised in the ways of his people, absorbing the teachings of the Holy Prophet. He believed faith holds the key to everyone's fate. This formed the roots of his theism, laid the foundation of his patriotism and inspired selfless nationalism. He explained the simplicity of his style and the candor of his humor and his aversion for materialism. In trials and triumphs, he held steadfastly and studiously to this value. He never doubted that whatever happened was divine and he always waited on Allah for guidance. The leaders of the then northern Nigeria saw that the military will play major roles in the new Nigeria forming in the nineteen fifties. The regionalists and devolved nature of the federal constitution by Sir Arthur Richards, Sir Oliver Littleton and Sir John MacPherson disrupted the colonial orders authoritarian unity. The military then was the most crucial and influential institution of state. It was the agency of colonial power, then transitioned into civilian control as the British administration retired and the Young Republic of Nigeria Kingdom. Young Muhammadu Buhari was gently undergoing secondary education between nineteen fifty-six and nineteen sixty-one, when the headhunters of the northern establishment visited the Katena Middle School to recruit boys into the military. With his gangling height and straight gait, there was no way he could have escaped the attention of the recruiters and consequently a career in the army. Let us pause to see the value in this crucial insight. Our former president was enrolled to serve a purpose. He was meant to give his people a voice in national institution undergoing demographic change and martial modernization. He was to help reside over the young Nigerian state's coercive apparatus. At nineteen, he gave his life to Nigeria in sickness and in health, in war and in peace, in life and in death. But his commission brought more than danger. It was a commission of guns, of tanks, of bullets and of bombs. That was what Muhammadu Buhari faced in the Nigerian Civil War. He was trained at the Nigerian Military Training College and at Mons Officer Keddes School in Adoshot, England. And at just twenty years old, he became a platoon commander of the Second Infantry Battalion in Abekuta. He fought and survived the Nigerian Civil War. He played a leading, a leading role in the coups and counter coups that saw the military intervene in Nigeria's government. When military music played early at the end of nineteen eighty-three, ending the four-year rule of the Chagari civilian administration, few were shocked, especially those of us who are chroniclers of event and history in the Nigerian media space. We were not shocked to see Buhari at the top. It was at the perfect time to show that he had matured as a commander and as a nationalist. The war against indiscipline, why, was nationwide. It sought to restore our integrity from the social anomie of the previous era. Of course, Buhari was so determined to save Nigeria, his country, he put patriotism above personal freedom. He expected Nigerians to follow him. He saw libertarians and civic groups as obstacles to his mission and tried to coerce them. He believed the end would justify his means. He trusted his conscience would clear him for inflicting pain on those he thought opposed the state. And in August of nineteen eighty-five, he exited the stage through his removal by his colleagues. Allah saved him as he was detained and retired early, for God had not finished with him. Those eighteen months in power had been marked by some draconian excesses, yet later it became difficult to match the ethical purity, exemplary discipline and passion and patriotism of the Buhari era. The overthrown leader became the cornerstone of a new consensus of faith and piety. The masses in the north especially rallied to him. He stood for all that the negative elite denied them. They saw him as a father sent by Allah to combat poverty. They called him Se Baba and he embraced their cause. A mass movement was thus born. Yet the movement needed political power to channel state resources to protect the poor. The party merger that delivered this under the banner of the All Progressive Congress made the dream real. God used President Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu and other compatriots to bring back a leader whose love for the masses was boundless. Your Excellencies, Honourable Ministers, today we bid farewell not only to a man, but to an inspiration, a leader whose unwavering devotion to faith and humanity elevated all who knew him. He walked a path guided by integrity and conviction, remaining true to a purpose higher than self. This was a life that inspires us all to reach for greatness anchored in humility, service and love for country. Let us tell our children in the crushes of Kaduna, in the nursery classes of Nembey, in the primary schools of Ekiti and all over Nigeria, that in this country, a man was lived, who could not be tempted with money, who could not be swayed by material inducements, who lived in the conviction that one day he would give account to his maker. That was President Muhammadu Buhari, our hero, our leader of all times. His soul rests in perfect peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Next is Minister of Women Affairs and Social Development, Ajia Sulemane Ibran.
The Chairman of Council, the President, Federal Republic of Nigeria, Your Excellency, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu, GCFR, the Vice President, His Excellency, Senator Kashim Shetima, GCON, the Leadership of the National Assembly, Executive Governors, High Present, Distinguished Members of Council and the family of the late former President Muhammadu Buhari. There are days when we govern, there are days when we serve and there are days, rare, sacred, when we reflect. Today, as one of those solemn days, a day of remembrance, a day of gratitude, a day of national reflection, a day to pay our respects and our tribute to the man of the people, for the people and by the people. Bright nations are built by leaders who plant trees under whose shade they will never sit. Today, we honor His Excellency, the late former President Muhammadu Buhari, a man who sothcied of institutional resilience and compassion for the marginalized, knowing that the harvest will outlast his tenure. Yet, as we post to remember his service, we also recognize this truth. The best way to honor a legacy is not by dwelling on it, but by building on it with courage. Under your leadership, Mr. Chairman, we are doing just that, honoring the past by empowering the future. It is a profound sense of privilege that I speak today, having served under the former late President Buhari as an implementer and now at the highest level of policymaking under the able leadership of His Excellency, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu, GCFR. This rare opportunity has given me a singular perspective to witness how leadership, though different in style, can share an unshakable commitment to Nigeria's most vulnerable. though different in style, can share an unshakable commitment to Nigerians most vulnerable and are underserved. It has been said that a nation is judged by how it treats its most vulnerable population. In governance, some are remembered for what they built, but the late President Muhammadu Buhari will be remembered not only for what he built, but for the lives he touched, the people he stood for. He deepened our institutions and strengthened Nigerian sovereignty. He advanced humanitarian response for the underserved population, offering dignity to the displaced, survivors of trafficking, the refugees, and others on the margins. He saw them, he listened, and he acted. As the Deputy General of the National Agency for the Prevention of Trafficking in Persons, the NAPTIP, I had the honor of leading the fight against human trafficking. With his support, Nigeria was elevated from the U.S. Tier Two watch list to Tier Two, a pivotal achievement that averted sanctions and restored our global credibility. Later, as the Federal Commissioner, the CEO of the National Commission for Refugees, Migrants, and Internally Displaced Persons, the NCF RMI, I saw a president who carried a burden of displacement as a personal measure. Against all odds, he ensured the signing of the NCF RMI Act of 2022, a historic milestone that came after eight failed attempts and over fourteen years of delay. This historic leap gave a legal backing, an institutionalized hope for millions of persons of concerns, refugees, the migrants, and the entire displaced persons in Nigeria. One moment stood out vividly less than forty-eight hours before leaving office. The late former president sat in these same chambers and virtually commissioned several resettlement cities built for our displaced citizens. He said, I quote, "These people have been through so much. If all I do is give them a place to call home, I am at peace." It was a simple sentence, but profound, and a reflection of who he was and the depth of his compassion. Yet, Mr. Chairman, legacies are not preserved by wishes alone. They are preserved by action. Today, under your visionary leadership and the renewed hope agenda, we are writing the next chapter. We are not only building on the late former president's foundation, which recognizes women as the heartbeat of the nation, but we are accelerating it. The strategic inclusion of women, children, and vulnerable groups have moved from policy to priority, from blueprints to budget lines, from economic empowerment to social protection and development. This administration has widened the scope, deepened the scale, and fast-tracked the delivery of inclusive governance. Your Excellency, Mr. Chairman, permit me on behalf of the Nigerian people, especially the women and vulnerable groups whose lives he touched, extend our heartfelt gratitude to you, Your Excellency, for the honor, dignity, and the personal presence you brought to the commemoration of the late President Muhammadu Buhari's passing. Your leadership during this time, your personal presence, your commitment to ensuring a befitting burial for him has not gone unnoticed. This is not just a gesture of state, it is a mark of character and continuity, and we thank you, Mr. President. As we honor his memory, we also affirm that his legacy is not a relic of the past. It is a living force propelling Nigeria forward under your guidance, Mr. President. May this knowledge comfort his family, comfort the nation, and continue to inspire us all. May Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala shower his mercy on Muhammadu Buhari. May Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala forgive his shortcomings, reward his sacrifice, and grant him eternal peace in the journey to Fidows. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister. Next is General David Umar, Minister of Works.
Your Excellency, the Chairman of Council and President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu, GCFR. Your Excellency, the Vice President, Senator Kashim Shetima Kashim. Your Excellency is the Leadership of National Assembly, my colleagues, cabinet members, the family of our late president. This is tribute to our late President, President Muhammadu Buhari, GCFR. It was a moment of unbelief to me when on Monday, fourteenth of July, 2025, the news made round that former President Muhammadu Buhari had died on Sunday, thirteenth of July, 2025. And this continued until our dear president officially released the news. The first thing that came to my mind was the mystery of the journey of life. Late President Muhammadu Buhari lived a selfless life. He believed and he walked for the oneness of Nigeria. From a disciplined soldier who rose through the ranks of the Nigerian army to serve in many capacities as military governor, military head of state, and to a democratically elected two-time president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. I had the privilege of serving as a state governor in those eight years that he presided over the affairs of this country as the president and commander-in-chief of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. I can recount a number of unforgettable moments with him. One of such was the time I joined All Progressive Congress and of the party. I was in PDP, and we had gone to see him, and it was a very triumphant time of ensas. And when the acting national chairman was the governor of Yobe State, I went with Atiku Bagudu was the then progressive chairman, All Progressive Chairman Governor's Chairman, I went with His Excellency Badaru, and then his Chief of Staff, Professor Gambary. And after we saw a man so excited and so happy, and when we left him, he called back Professor Gambary and said something to him. He said, "Today remains one of my happiest moments." And he asked him why, sir? He said, "Because this has demonstrated that I have love for the entire country." And that was a memorable statement for me. I also recall the time he came to commission projects in a boy's state. Very disciplined man, and he came by ten a.m. And he started commissioning projects, and I recall that for the first time, he commissioned a project at night, and that's the light tunnel that we built and named after him. And when by ten p.m. he was going back to his room to sleep, he said something to me. Many people did not know that was a very humorous person. And he said to me, "Governor, you know how to punish people." I said, "Mr. President, you signed for this." And he laughed, and he went to his room. I recall a man that so loved my state and my person that when we built the airport, the international airport, we named it after him. And he called me and he said, "Thank you very much, but I would rather want you to allow his friend, then his friend, who was his running mate one time, Senator Chubokadibo. He said, "Would you mind if I named the airport after him?" I said, "As you wish." And he did that, and I requested for the federal government to take over the airports. And he approved that. Not only that he approved that, here he faked, and I think Barista Kayemo will bear witness. He also approved that the state be refunded, the amount we use in building that airport. Some fake members argued that I didn't request for refund, but you overruled them. That's the depth of his love for my state and for my person. And when he was commissioning our university, he said to me, "This university and the equipment you have here, the state cannot manage it. I have to take it over." And he graciously took over the university and even attached a name to it, that I will remain very grateful for life for that honor. And let me also remember him, because without him, my present governor wouldn't have been governor, because all was said to change in that process. But he called the then chairman of the APC and warned that the state must be allowed to produce their candidates in APC. So let me recall that he was so fair and very supportive to all the governors, irrespective of party affiliations. He introduced the Uncle Borua's scheme that helped our agriculture. He refunded Paris Club to governors, and he refunded federal projects done by states. I recall that when I left APC, I was badly fought, and I went to him and said, "This particular governor, please don't give him the money", because the money was very hooch. And he laughed, but to our very surprise, he released the money, and APC governors became very much afraid. But he did that. He also introduced World Bank program on state physical responsibility aimed at transparency of state affairs, budgeting process, and procurement process. And we competed, and we won several millions of dollars, which helped states like ours to develop their infrastructure. Mr. Chairman, my condolences first go to you, our dear President, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu. God made you his destiny helper, his friend, and his brother. The whole country and beyond acknowledged the honor you accorded him in life and the disembowelment you offered him in thanks. His burial was a great moment of emotional outpour and deep grief for you and our First Lady. No wonder arise news captured that moment greatly and joined other Nigerians to appreciate you. I too say you are a good brother, indisputably a good friend of our late president. To the family he left, I pray God to grant you the strength and the fortitude during this period of mourning. To friends and associates, let us be consumed by the sweet legacy of his life that that cannot take away and through which we treasure his memory. To the governor and people of Katsina State, I say, "Your help is in our God." My take about his life and his legacies, is that why we live? Let us live unto the Lord. And why we serve? Let us serve with the fear of God. For life is only but a journey. May the soul of our departed leader and former president rest in perfect peace. Amen.
Now, thank you. We invite the representative of the family of late President Muhammadu Buhari, his son, Yusuf Muhammadu Buhari. Say your word to him.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to acknowledge protocols already established. On behalf of the entire members of the late Muhammadu Buhari's family, I wish to sincerely extend our deepest gratitude to Mr. President, His Excellency Bola Ahmed Tinubu, the First Lady, Senator Oduremi Tinubu, the Vice President, His Excellency Kashim Shetima, and his wife, Hajianna Nakashim, for your outstanding foreign support received by the family from the time he took ill until he peacefully passed on, which was Sunday, thirteenth of July, 2025. It has showed that he was regarded far more than a politician, but regarded as a friend and a father. To all members of the Federal Executive Council for the care and befitting state burial accorded to our late father, we appreciate you all. I also wish to thank the Senate President, Speaker of the House of Representatives, and all the distinguished and honorable members of the National Assembly for honoring the memory of our late father during the state burial endeavor. I will also not forget to mention and convey our appreciation for the support from the Attorney General of the Federation and members of the judiciary, Honorable Minister of Foreign Affairs in the Nigerian High Commission in London, the Governor of Katsina State, the Governor of State as well, and all his colleagues for identifying and standing firmly with us during this difficult period. Let me specially and specifically acknowledge the Chief of Defense Staff, the Service Chiefs, Heads of Security, and Law Enforcement Agencies, as well as all members of the Armed Forces of Nigeria, our late father's first and primary constituency, for the esprit de corps, solidarity, and the befitting military burial given to our late father. Finally, we thank all members of the Diplomatic Corps, traditional and religious leaders, political associates, friends, family members, the press, and indeed all Nigerians at home and in diaspora for the numerous calls, messages, condolences, visits, and prayers offered for the repose of the gentle soul of our departed father. Your visits, calls, and prayers symbolize a great honor to the memory of our late father, and we're sincerely grateful for all the support and solidarity extended to the family. May Allah continue to bless us all and to bless all of us. Thank you, Daddy. Thank you, Daddy. Thank you, Daddy. May Allah continue to bless, guide, and protect you throughout your tenure successfully. Long live, Mr. President, and long live the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you.
Thank you, Yusuf. Mr. President, before we take the national anthem, need to two prayers. One Muslim, one Christian, for the repose of departed leader. The Deputy Senate President would take the Muslim prayer while Hope Uzodi, my chairman, progressive governor, would take the Christian prayer. Deputy Senate President.
Before we take the prayers, may I, in honor of his memory, with this special session of the Federal Executive Council expanded, can we adopt the renaming of university of my degree of a new name as Muhammadu Buhari University Medical. Thank you very much. I'll do prayer.
Let us pray. Almighty and ever-living God, we thank you for this moment of your glory. We commit our country, Nigeria, into your holy hands. We commit, Mr. President, President Bola Ahmed Tinubu, and members of his government into your protective hands. We present the spirit of the former president, President Muhammadu Buhari, into your able hands. Forgive him all his sins, receive his spirit with mercy. Grant him mercy, show him love and protection. Grant his family and all those left behind. Grant his family and all those left behind, affected by his passing, the government and people of Kassena State, and indeed Nigerians, the fortitude to bear this great loss. Listen to our monies, oh Lord, we pray, and award him accordingly. May his sacrifice and contributions towards our national growth precious unity as a nation, precious development, precious prosperity, and a better and greater nation, to the glory of your holy name. Lead our president and indeed all of us here gathered back to our homes safely and peacefully. And may the soul of President Muhammadu Buhari and the souls of all the faithful departed, through the mercy of God, rest in perfect peace. Amen.
Sorry, before the National Anthem, Mr. President, we'll have a photograph with members of the family. After that, we'll take the National Anthem. National Anthem.